Yeah, we're live.
Okay, Madam Mayor, your mic is off, but it is 6 o'clock and we are live.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this Tuesday, February 16th, regular City Commission meeting to order and ask the clerk to call the roll, please.
Mayor Pam Triola, Vice Mayor Andy Amoroso, Commissioner Scott Maxwell, Commissioner Carla Bloxen, Commissioner Herman Robinson. Thank you.
If everyone will rise for the invocation. Heavenly Father, we ask you to be with us this evening and always. We ask you to bring your Holy Spirit into the minds, lips, hearts, and souls of those who've been elected to serve this community, to come together, to basically create solutions and a wonderful new future for this beautiful city of Lake Worth Beach. We ask for kindness. We ask for compassion. We ask for the health and safety of all of our loved ones, our wonderful neighbors. We ask you to put a hedge of protection around this city and protect us all from COVID and anything that could harm us. We ask us all, please, to come together during these trying times to remember that we are all one. We are one community. We are one city. And we care deeply for one another and the future of this beautiful city. Amen. Commissioner Maxwell, would you lead us, please?
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are moving on with additions, deletions, or reordering. Madam Clerk, I see that you've got something.
Yes, Madam Mayor, there was a professional service agreement for a special magistrate that came in after I had already put out the agenda. It needs to be done now. It's an emergency situation, so they've asked to add this on. So we're asking for that to be item L under the consent agenda.
Okay, professional services agreement is now item L under the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as amended. Second?
Second.
Who made the motion, Madam Mayor? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
The motion was made by the Vice Mayor, seconded by the Vice Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you so very much. All right, we're moving on to our presentation with an exciting one. I'm so happy. We've got Dr. Elvis Epps, our Principal of Lake Worth High School here. And it certainly is a challenging time right now to be an educator. And I'm so very honored that you were able to take the time to be with us tonight. Thank you so very much. And I know you have a great presentation for us and we're eager to hear. Did you receive it, Madam City Clerk?
Keith, can you run Dr. Epps's presentation that you received this afternoon?
Yeah, just one second.
Okay, we're sitting up. We're good.
Madam Mayor, we also don't have a camera shot on Dr. Epps at this point.
Okay.
We have a glitch between virtual versus the person, but.
That's right. Come on, take my seat.
You can have mine. Come on, please take my.
Madam Mayor, that he looks much better person than he does on screen.
And you're welcome to de-mask since there's no one near you if you'd like to. It's easier. So are we up? Keith?
I should be sharing now.
There we go.
Yes, we're on. Thank you. Dr. Epps, you're up.
You can just tell him. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and council members.
Ben, is that mic on? That mic is not on. You're killing us.
You're killing us.
What about that mic on that camera right there?
You know, seriously, Dr. Epps, you could sit here. Come on up here.
That's easy. Just on the end. There you go.
There you go. Thank you, Vice Mayor Pro Tem.
And he's had his mask on the whole time, so you're good.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Bringing you greetings from the school district of Palm Beach. Superintendent Dr. Donna Fanoi, Keith Oswald, Deputy Superintendent Valerie Haynes, Regional Superintendent for the Central Area Schools. And present here with me tonight is Karen Webzel, who's the Instructional Soup over the Heisman Middle and High Schools for the Central Area as well. And also bringing you greetings from Lake Worth High School. And just to bring you our state of the school update. And we will have some questions about a lot of things we have in place, but I hope I'm able to cover it. And tonight we're just talking about what's happening about two miles away from here. Not even that. Next slide, please. As you see, Lake Worth is 199 years old. It's 99 years old. Next year, we celebrate our centennial. And we're in the process of already starting to put some things in place, including a proclamation if that's somewhere in the works. But we want to just want to recognize those who graduated from Lake Worth and some of our oldest members. We did have a member from the class of 1944 recently passed. But, you know, they're fading, but we should have someone from 45, 46, 47, 48, and 50. They should still be very active with our Alumni Association meetings. So we've been getting meetings and videotapes and talking to some members near and far. As you see, when we built in 1922, the first graduating class consisted of seven young ladies. And I still have that picture. I have that picture on Lake Worth campus. But the first class graduated in 1923. And our first football team was in 1924. In '25, '26, they started with the first baseball team. They were known as the Ma, what do you call that? The Mighty Maroons. So that was the Mighty Maroons. So the color is still maroon and white and silver. So they eventually went over to Trojan. Next slide, please. Some of the highlights we have on our campus, and I'd just like to highlight. You can go to the next. There you go. Some of our community outreach. We do a lot. It was very hard to try to narrow this thing down to four pictures, but I just wanted the most recent. What we do every year is we have our annual tour drive. We are 91%, almost 92% free and reduced. We have a lot of kids in need. But twice a year, our students take time out of their schedule to take the focus off them and see what we can do to help our homeless, community members who do not have food, clothing, or anything that can help them. And we do get people to donate, which we call some cards to Publix and Winn-Dixie. So we had two people to donate over $2,500 worth of gift cards for Publix and Winn-Dixie. And we truly appreciate them. As you see, Mr. Kelly is a former principal of Lake Worth High School. You all remember that he was there from 1980 to 1999. He did a great job and he's still very actively involved. He just recently, last month, stepped down from being the Chairperson of the Dollars for Scholars. And so it was his dream and it's still going. It's still going strong. So when we have our tour drive, he came by and donated a basketball and another gift for a wonderful kid. As you see with our tour drive, Highland Elementary, South Grade, and Barton Elementary School were the recipients for the kids who actually came to camp on campus. So our young people and our teachers and students, and they said they want to do something for those schools. Both for the kids who actually came on campus. So we were able to break those down. And I wanted to kindergarten through third grade, but we were able to do a little bit more. Have some big kid toys as well. So we just want to recognize all of the kids. Kindergarten through first grade who actually came to school. And so that's just a recipient. And so over 1,500 toys donated. We do an annual Thanksgiving dinner giveaway in our front parking lot where we give away over 2,000 meals every Thanksgiving morning from 8:00 to noon. And we average about 50 students who come out on Thanksgiving morning to make that possible. Our middle school band camps, we do a great job in getting in touch with Landtana Middle School and Elsie Swain and Lake Worth Middle School and then feed the feeder schools to build up our program. Four years ago, when I became principal, we had nine active members. And so today, Dr. Tiffany Cox, you will see, if you go to the next slide. Dr. Tiffany Cox is our band director. Was recently recognized as by the Yamaha Foundation as a 40 under 40 leader in music. And she's just an outstanding young lady, plays trumpet at Florida State University. And she works very hard at building now with the 95 young people in the band. And she tell you, if you don't even know how to walk straight, if you want to join the band, I show you how to just hit two sticks together. So she takes them and she teaches them like how to play an instrument. And so she's wonderful and she does a lot in the community and everyone loves and adores her. Our very own Chief Derek Townsend is our regional, the state of Florida and as well as the other areas, outstanding leader. And his name is Outstanding Instructor of the Year. And so he is retired from the Air Force as an E-9 and Chief Master Sergeant Derek Townsend. He's been on our campus for many years and he's just a great leader. And our Air Force, our TC High School units on the top 5% in the nation. They receive the highest rating among, and we're over 300 members in our Air Force Junior ROTC. So we just want to say that some of the great things we're doing. And just on Friday night, our boys' basketball team were district basketball champs. And then we played this Thursday against Cora Springs High School. They are coming to Lake Worth Thursday night to play in the regionals. So we headed off to see the autograph of Fine Arts Festival. We had winners and they did a fantastic job. And it was a district-wide competition and our ninth, 10th, and 12th grades came in first place. And our 11th grader came in second, which is a great honor. We're doing some great things. I told all the teachers, we're doing some wonderful things. I think the world needs to know about this. And so this is how we celebrate. In spite of what's going on, we still focus on academics. We still focus on celebrating and honing those skills that our students will need as they prepare for college, career, tech school after that. Next slide, please. What I'd like to do is just talk to you about the four areas of SWOT and, you know, the business model that really looked at how we do business and some of the things that we focus on as we move forward. When we put our plan together this year, we met with Karen Webzel, Instructional Superintendent, and we all had to just look back, look at, what exactly do we want to achieve this year? How are we going to do it? Who to target audience? And so we need to put together a plan of action. And so intense focus, one thing that we have strengths, we focus, have an intense focus on our ELL academic pathway. Those are students because we have 57% of our students are Hispanic. And about 25% of our students are Haitian students that speak Creole. Of that group, it's about 3% to 4%, almost 5% speak no English at all. And so we have 600, about 80 students in our school now who have been in the United States less than two years. We are far exceeding any high school in the district. These are kids who've been in the United States less than two years. And we have enough, more than some middle schools have students, we have almost 700. And that's a lot. And Lake Worth High School's been leading. That's a category that nobody wants, but we've been leading the district in that category for years. And I just laugh because you'll see that when we get to the next slide. Not now, but I'm just saying. A clear pathway for students to get. The next one is an A's diploma. I don't know if you remember in high school, they had like advanced placement. These are the accelerated advanced rigorous courses. So Aces at Cambridge, international Cambridge level courses. They are college-level courses. So we're also leading the county in that because we decided as a group to collectively come together and let's give our children a try. Where other schools, you know, they got a lot of kids going in. We didn't have a lot of students going in because it is a college-level, highly rigorous course that a lot of them are just not used to. And so if you've only been in the United States and Dr. Epps and the crew put you in some of these college-level courses after three or four years, you're like, well, I'm afraid. But we have found out that if you put a student in a high performing, they tend to mirror what's going on and they get in line and they look around and if everyone is working hard, then they tend to work hard. So we have a success rate in that as well, about 60. We have a high percentage, 64, 60. We have a high number of our students, about English language learners are in those programs. But we want to make sure all of our students, that's the goal, to make sure all of our kids get a rigorous level and advanced level course before they require. It's also a college, I mean, a high school requirement, some kind of accelerated course, military or an advanced. So we like to open that up. And one of the things I saw when I first went there, Lake Worth High School four years ago, those rooms were very scarce. I mean, just very, the enrollment, the number was very low. And the regular kids were about 25 to 30 bursting at the seams. And so we had to find a way to balance that out. So it's worked out pretty good. The next bullet is a last year graduation rate is at 91.1. I just want to let you know that went up. You know, a lot of students were still struggling with reading. I want to be very honest with you also. If you notice that, the graduation rate may not be where it was this year as it might be next year. Because, you know, the governor, they bypassed all the. And that really benefited Lake Worth High School because we were sitting at 78%. So we had a 12.3% increase. But that also gave almost 100 students a free pass not to take the test. They didn't have to because they were really struggling. We make sure they do take this test, but they are really struggling to pass this test. They're trying to come tutoring. We have the curriculum. We have the textbooks. We have everything in place to really help them. And just, you know, it's just like you're going to any other country, learn the language, and now you have to take these high school rigorous exams, get a standard diploma. So it really helped us out. And like I said, I'm celebrating this year, but I just want to let you know, just in case you notice something next year, you know why. But we will be assessing this year. And if you want to know anything about that, I have Dr. Webzel in the back to explain. We will be testing this year. So then the last one on the strength is AA degrees. We normally have one of the top school or right there in the one or two top schools in the district that comes, kids graduate with associate degrees from Palm Beach State College. Palm Beach State College is a wonderful partner with Lake Worth High School, the school district, but definitely Lake Worth High School. Next week, on the 25th and 26th, is that next week? They are coming and we have an application day, is what we call it. Their admission office is coming to Lake Worth High School. And they did it two years ago. Of course, we didn't do it last year because of the COVID, the pandemic. But this is something that was part of one of my annual goals, is to increase graduation, but more than that, is to increase where they went after college. It could have been military or something. But I noticed out of 550 students graduating, we probably had about 250 going off to college or military. And I couldn't even explain where that other 300 were going. So that was my goal, saying, I need to know, I need to do a better job tracking where you're going. And if you don't go, you're prepared. You still have your diploma. You still apply to Palm Beach State. Everyone, I want them to apply to Palm Beach State at the minimum. And they said, well, I'm going here. It doesn't matter. Still apply and go here. So they're coming to Lake Worth next week. Their mission director is coming. It's going to be virtual, but he wants to come on the campus so the kids can see Lake Worth Media Center. And then the weakness is just, we look at low proficiency in reading, math for our lower 20, 40% of our students. And that's just the nature of the beast when you have a lot of students come on your campus and they are not getting the, and especially this year with that, the COVID slide. And I talked about it over here. A lot of kids are acquiring the language. And when you acquire the language, we still need some of those fundamental skills. And one way we've done is hired a lot of elementary teachers who are outstanding elementary teachers to come to high school. So they have this training on those different skills and different areas, reading, teaching our kids how to read and write and how to survive. And they pick up pretty quickly. And so we have our work cut out, but we're trying to do like seven years of work in two years. It's an ongoing thing, so whenever, you know, if anybody wants to switch with me, Mr. Herman, and you go to Lake Worth and I come and take your chair, look at you saying, no, I don't want to. So it's a job, but it's a job I really enjoy. Student attendance is an issue, you know, right now. A lot of our kids have to work. A lot of kids are teen parents and there are a lot of things going on in the community where they.
It's $10.
$25.
During my presentation, I'm starting off. Go back to slide one. But student attendance is one of the issues that has been a challenge across the nation. It was always an issue at Lake Worth. We average almost between 100 and 135 students per day before COVID. That's how many kids we were missing before COVID. So now we are missing a lot.
What's the total population?
We have 2408 as of today. We were projected to be 2602, 2,602 students. And that tells you how many are not at the school. Yes, we don't know. Teacher recruitment is always a challenge. Lake Worth High School, sometimes we don't get those fresh out of colleges of education. So what we have learned to do, and I've learned to do in my 29 years of working in schools, 27 years in Title I schools, is if you bring passion to the door when I interview you, I could teach you the skill. So we're teaching them how to build a plane while we're flying it. And so it takes someone who's very intentional and watching them, being in the classroom, partnering with them. And I'm talking about the teachers. They're learning how to teach along with teaching the students. Whereas some of the other schools, those kids already have gone through internships and went through colleges of education. They have those strategies. We got a lot of second career. Almost 50% of my, if not more, of my teachers are second career people. I mean, I was in the Navy 12 years before I even thought about becoming a teacher. So I'm like a second career person as well. So if I can do it, and I know they can do it. And so that's a challenge. Then the learning gaps among the students, we have varying kids in, you know, Hispanic and Haitian and Jamaican and kids from Bangladesh does not equate to low performing. Some of the kids come to the United States are very, very sharp and intelligent. They speak multiple languages and they were, and give the programs in their country. So our job is to assess them and put them in the right place. And a lot of them just make sure, we don't bunch. We have to assess to make sure we put you in the right track. And just to move a little faster, in our 3DE and the opportunities, we want to expand our advanced courses through our leadership courses. That is the 3DE Claudia Barto was talking about there with junior achievement. That came in under the existence, under the junior achievement as a leadership model. So our students have worked very hard to come entrepreneurship, marketing, to do case studies, write business plans, to do public speaking. They have to do presentations. I think it was two weeks ago, our students presented to the CEO of Home Depot and his executive team. They were in a national competition. They did not win. We were all in high school. They had a ninth grade team and a 10th grade team. But the CEO was very, very wonderful guy. I'd love to just get him to just do another virtual meeting with the student. It was, I learned a lot from just listening to him. 40 years, it's 40, 41 years he's been with, just been in that industry. And so we want to increase reading and writing opportunities in all the classroom. Students write the way they speak. And so right now, we find out, especially with COVID, we have a lot of kids want to write the way they text. And so we're trying to move them away from that to get back to the bare bone basis. So here's a complete sentence. And it's, I'm really, we are literally going back to the basics. And so what we have to do is just make sure that they understand the difference between casual conversation and then what we call in the classroom. That's going to help them at the next level when we talk about college and career readiness. And so that's been a challenge. Increase after-school opportunities for all students. A lot of our students want to come. Our media center is bare-boned because a lot of students have to leave and go to work. And they have to pick up a sibling at another school. And so the threats we have is ending the long COVID slide. As of the 13th of this month, it's been 11 straight months. Some of the kids have not seen the school and we have not seen them. We have not seen them. And just my estimation based on some research that I read, it's going to take another three to five years just to recover from this, from this. And so let's just get ready to hunker down and do what we have to do. Student connectivity and engagement online. A lot of students are not on campus, but we have about 25%. We average between 590 and maybe 600, 622 as of yesterday, students on our campus. So about 25%, but that means about 17, 16, 1700 are still at home. And a lot of them are not even turning on the computers. And I called a mom after school today and said, ma'am, your child ain't even been in school all that semester. You came last week and you have not been. And so, yeah, she says she can't go online. And so I'm demanding that she comes in the building tomorrow. I told mom and daughter, I want to see them in my office, on campus first thing tomorrow morning. But that's what we had to do was just, and you know, and we know it's a pandemic, but I cannot allow failure to exist and continue as an excuse. And so the mom was making excuses for the daughter. I said, ma'am, she didn't go to her last school. She got, she didn't go to school last time. So anyway, that's how we do have devices, the students who, and you'll see it on another side. So if you decide, if a parent decide to keep their child at home, they have, of course, everyone's got a laptop, one-to-one. And they also, if they didn't have internet connections, they also have a, which we call a hotspot. So the district provided money through our taxpayer, I mean, our raises, our raises, the referendum and some of the taxpayer money, you all put some money aside to make sure that we taking care of any schools. It went to get those devices to make sure. So we've issued out about 75 at Lake Worth High School. 75 of those devices. All children have a laptop. It's optional. You know, we want them to have one. But some parents have laptops at home. If they keep their kids at home or camera, we wanted some with the camera. So we gave a Google Chromebook. It cost about $300 each and some a little bit more. So and then the last one is campus security, which is always an issue. Lake Worth and Dryness High School, one of the, you know, 100 years old, open campus. The only campus that was built, and you saw from the original picture, campus security. We do have a campus monitor, a police aid. I do have a full-time police officer. And I have, there has to be at least nine, 10 administrators and instructional coaches who are constantly walking. We have about 80 cameras, probably about 57 are operable. We're in the process, some of them just outdated with the new technology. So we do have about 58 to 60 cameras that are constantly working and recording. So we're very excited about that. But with 25, 600 kids on campus, it's been very manageable with this pandemic. Next slide, please. And then it's just my wonderful quote I like. Don't wait for the perfect moment. Take the moment and make it perfect. And this is what we had to do at Lake Worth High School. When I reported there four years ago, everyone had an excuse. Everyone had a reason why we were not excelling. Everyone can tell me, even in the community, I'm new to Palm Beach County and new to Lake Worth. So I don't know the history of the city, the school. I don't know all of that. So I walked in with the expectation we will achieve success. And so, you know, we've been staying out of the news, which is good. That's a great start, staying out of the news. But we've been showcasing the great things that we have been doing. And so, and that's what we had to do. We had to create our own magic. And so, and we had to make moments happen. And like we said, where amazing happens, and that's at Lake Worth High School. All right, next slide, please. And so I'm not going to read all of these to you. I see the question marks. They're supposed to be bullets. But we had a very high number of students who have failure rates. And I want to just address, and you know, I can take time on this. I want to entertain your questions. But in this presentation, it's almost over. I really want you to know what we are doing on our campus. There are a lot of students that are just not even with the technology, with the laptop and with the devices. Everything in place to be.
You're muted.
Oh, I'm sorry. I did it. I was thinking, I coughed and I turned it off.
I got you.
Forgetting that you're all on the same microphone.
Okay, thank you. So one of the things we do for the students that have high failure rate and those who just barely passed, we want to put support because if you just barely pass, you're close enough to drop down to be in the failure range. And we're trying to prevent that. And this slide has caused a lot of that. And a lot of kids have this lethargic mindset that's going on that I'm at home. I don't have to do much. If I turn the computer on, the teacher feel some kind of sympathy or empathy toward me being at home and giving me a grade, but we're not in that business to give grades. You have to earn those. But we do have safety nets in place and we did, we put in precautions to help our students. And the first one, you know, if you want to read over those, we provided tutors for our students. We helped, we hired tutors and we put, we called students at home who were felons. The parents, I know if you're okay with your child coming to school, we sanitize. We, the rooms, you know, we're six feet apart in the classroom. So we're practicing CDC protocol and guidelines to be safe. I'm demanding that your child come on campus. Here's a sad note. Kids who were on the honor roll are now in the failure status. We have seniors who have never had an F before. They've gone from As and Bs to Ds and Fs just to try to barely make it. And we know at the next level, barely make it will cause them not to have a job. So we've had a lot of seniors we had to bring in. And I just had, I just had to demand, there's just no answers or buts about it. A lot of our students are ELL, English Language Learners and Speakers. And what we had to do is we have staff members who are bilingual and some are trilingual. And so it's really helped us out to be flexible to meet the students where they are. Because if you're not speaking, you know, if you're still acquiring the English language, you're still struggling with understanding what the teacher's saying. So it is okay in our classroom to speak your native tongue to help you that this is a pencil and this is a paper. And we're talking about 16, 17, 18-year-olds. We're doing primary strategies with, this is a door and this is, here's a word, you know. And then we, you know, we pick up the pace and they acquire pretty quickly. Once you put them in that, they assimilate to the environment. Then the other thing is to provide to the teachers. We had to help the teachers. And that is with professional development. They have professional learning communities. They have professional learning communities where we, we sit and have our data chats. What is, what, what, what's the number telling us? What are we seeing when we do our instructional walkthroughs? And, and what's the feel? Because as you say, with the, with the culture and climate of a school, but you also have a culture and climate of a classroom. So what exactly is going on? Is the teacher talking too much? Or do we need to hear from the kid? Well, when we walk in the room, we want to hear from the student. We want to know, what do you know? Teacher poses a question that the kids get that brain going. This is how you retain. And then when they read and write, they'll learn more. And then we're providing some summer, and you can see we have a mental health professional. We have three professionals. We have an addiction, a counselor on our campus. She's outside consultant, been on our campus before I arrived there. Wonderful lady. But our mental health professional, it's just a wonderful, wonderful lady. She's just, just awesome. And what she provides is that, that primary, that first level, that level one, she's there. You don't have to call anyone. If a teacher said, I have a student who's talking about hurting him or herself, that's, that my person can call them in or we can go and get them. And they can sit and chat and walk around the campus. How's it going? What's going on? Mom and dad, I need to see you. So she can have those. And if anything beyond that, then they can get professional services. And if you see Sweet Three Sixty on that second to the last bullet. Sweet Three Sixty is a, is a, I don't want to call it a program, but it's, it's an, it's a, it's a curriculum that the school through the state of Florida, is it safe to say the state of Florida? The school district of Palm Beach has purchased for all of our students to go through in every school from elementary all the way up. And it comes in various language. But what it does inside the classroom, students get an opportunity to talk about seven different topics. There are really eight, but seven different topics on coping skills, suicide, adia- adiations. And we're talking about human trafficking and drug addiction. Those are the easy type thing. We used to call it the health class back in the day. But right now, this is an electronic version where the teacher engages students in conversation and dialogue about some things that are very, very heavy. And that's what we're facing at our school. Stress levels are through the roof. Suicide, kids are talking about that, the stress, anxiety. It's just, it's just off the charts. And if anybody's in, say a true story, you know, one of my students, it was a tenth grader, tenth, thirtieth, eleventh grader. His grandfather passed over the summer from COVID. And then he had to stop. He had to, he would think about quitting school because grandfather was the breadwinner. Because now it's just he and grandma. And so, and we had to talk, but it's a tough call when you say, I need you in school when mom and son got to eat and keep the lights on. So it's, those are the challenges we face. And then this summer, we, we were looking at a grant and we received some funding to see exactly what we're going to have in our schools. Keep our schools open this summer. I know it's about six or seven weeks. And I know it's been a long year for a lot of our students. But if, to really tackle this COVID slide academic, it's kind of hard to close the schools. Some of our kids really don't need to take the summer off. And I know it's going to burn them, but we, we've been very patient and we, and we will hold their hands. We won't burn them out. But they don't need to, it's going to take them two years to recoup. This is a high performing kids. But if they were already low performing, it's going to take three to five years from the research I read. So, all right, next one, please. And I mean, you can just look at this, if you have, gaze your eyes on it. And so when I said, what sets us apart from other schools? You can read that. That's the demographics. You will have opportunities to get this slide and look at the different languages, the countries of birth. The number of students, ninety-one, ninety-one point five or six percent free and reduced lunch. We are a high title one school because of the population. I broke down the males, females, African-American, Haitian students. They put African-American, Haitian students all in the same group, but we're about.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I know, I thought you said, wow, wow. You probably did. I know you did, okay. Well, the Haitian student, the African-Americans, all in about six percent. These are actually American-born, African-American-born students, but they, 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 they clung to African-American and Haitian. So that tells you about twenty-five percent of our students are Haitian descent. And like I said, of that, we, we probably have about two percent, three percent speak no English at all. But they learn quickly. And you see I is back and language students and our migrants, one percent, forty-one. So I put the number, student with disability, four hundred and seventy. And so we do have precautions and a lot of them are staying at home. But some of those are not yourself contained. Excuse me, a lot of our self-contained are staying still at home with their parents. And so we do have some who are coming to class and they're really coming out and they're getting involved. So we do have a rigorous schedule as possible with them. They're involved, they, they, they do some culinary and they go to PE. They, they walk the campus. I don't want to keep them just in one room all day. So we want to make sure they learn those coping skills and managing skills and how to walk from one class to the other. And that's what the growth and development I needed to see as a principal. So anybody with a degree, can you help move that first word spoken, language is spoken? I don't know how to pronounce it. They're only four letters. That's the language. Yeah, good luck. All right. So I'm always, I know it's interesting. I see you all looking at it. Those are the languages and those are the countries represented at Lake Worth High School. You can find another high school other than some international school. We look like an international, a true international language school. Maybe something to think about, but that's, that's, that's who we are. All right. Let me know when you're ready to, yeah.
It's cool.
All right, next slide, please. And then just COVID safe plans, what we have in place. A lot of money's been provided to the state and the money's been provided to the district. And the district provided all the schools, especially high schools, got more money for device supplies. Like I said, we purchased a COVID, which you call a sanitizer sprayer for the room in case someone tests positive. We don't have to wait for an outside vendor. Custodians have been trained, I've been trained, I went through the training with them. And so we know how to sanitize, wipe and make it happen, put on the gloves, put on the gear and make it happen. And so the custodians do it. I don't do it. They operate the machine and we get someone over there and then we isolate that room for twenty-four hours. Even though the instructor said you can occupy the room twenty minutes after you spray it, it's not good enough for me. I want to make sure that no one occupies that room for twenty-four hours.
How do you do it? Like when the kids change classes and stuff, is there like a cleaning?
White, yeah. Matter of fact, all the teachers in the classroom have a container of wipes, but it's a larger bucket and they have sanitizers. So the teachers give the students, they all wipe their areas down and I have six pallets of wipes. So we have enough for two years and probably in a hundred years from now, when the next pandemic come, we will have some wipes, still wiping. So. So anyway, they wipe in between and we do have our custodian wiping as much as possible. Now that we have picked up more students and I have one or two custodians during the morning, the most of them come at night. It's been a challenge trying to be everywhere to wipe the doorknobs outside. Because as soon as you wipe, somebody comes behind, you just, you know, it's just, it's gone. So we're doing our best. And so this is our plan at Lake Worth High School. The temperature monitors, anybody come on campus, we have to get their temperature, like I said, six feet in the classroom. And the district has a three to, three to six feet, but we're practicing in six feet because we don't have a lot of students yet. As the number increased, we will go from a six feet to a five to a four. But there's a letter that the districts already written for principal to use to say, ma'am, dad, because of the number of students in this particular classroom, here's a letter to inform you that, that, you know, that they are, they are not, they are within a six feet from each other. And so they have an option saying, you know what? Let me bring my child back home. It's too close for comfort. So, and then we have to track all, all the, how do we track the students? We do have seating charts. So in every room, every teacher must indicate where this child sat that day. And so that's why they sit in the same seat every day. So if we get a call, if I get a call at five o'clock now and they say, oh, so-and-so tested positive, I can pull up a teacher seating chart and find out which other students sat around that kid. And then then the department of health would have to contact those kids. Now I could have a kid sitting here, but if, if, if somebody's sitting over there by Mr. Herman, then I'm, I'm within six feet, but they would not contact him. Six feet for fifteen minutes or longer. But I will call this young man and say, he had to give me the names. And so that's how they do that. And then I would let everyone knows. So the fund is there, district fund is supplied. And then options for overcapacity classroom. Say for instance, they, a lot of them do come back. Well, we have an overflow room, which is the auditorium. And I have two adults down in auditorium. And that's why they have to bring their devices, their laptops to school every day. Because if, if the room is overcrowded, they can go to auditorium and still get the, and then we rotate. So it's not the same kid every day missing that teacher. Some kids want to go to the auditorium, but the others we keep in the classroom. All right, next slide, please. Next slide. All right, this is my wonderful quote says, imagine with all your mind, believe with all your heart, achieve with all your might. This is what we have to do. We're going to make it through this pandemic and we're going to work hard to make sure we get them. Twenty twenty is just the beginning. What happened, we don't know what twenty twenty-one is going to do. There's some hope because of the vaccine. Teachers, you know, you know, I'm speaking on their behalf as far as we all, you know, just like first responders, we on the front line. We essential workers and everybody, the man, we go back to work. So the job of principalship is my calling. And I'm here because I, I choose to be here and I love what I do. And we want to make sure that our teachers, when they come, they come safe. And they had every right to be nervous and reluctant. So I'm have some, and there are about maybe fifteen, sixteen teachers who are working remotely. And so, but, and the other ones, we just make it work on campus. I couldn't send everybody home because we have a business of running the school. And so I had to apologize to a lot of them that, you know what? I can't send everybody home. Somebody got to be here with the kids. Someone has to be here when the students show up and in the classroom. So, and so with all our might, it's what we're going to do. Work hard and give it our best every day. And I'm going to guarantee all of you that on Lake Worth High School campus, under my leadership, every teacher is going to bring it every day to make sure no child gets further behind, gets further behind. And we're doing what we can to make sure they come up the park. And we have been able to, and, and Ms. Wessel has been, you know, instructed all this, the, the principals in a region that, look, if you need to cancel this, so you can focus on this, so this kid won't get behind because this is what they're going to be assessed on, then you do what you have to do. And Dr. Fennor just said three words, run your school. You know what you're doing. Run your school, do what you have to do to make sure you, you have these, help these kids get. Next slide, please. And that's it. I just want to thank you all from the bottom of my heart for this opportunity again, just to come and share what's happening. You know, we could all talk forever on some things, but we doing, matter of fact, I only covered a tip of the iceberg of the great things that we are doing. But I, you see, I got your little logo from the city of Lake Worth Beach. But anyway, thank you for this opportunity and I'll be happy to entertain any questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, a couple of questions. Thank you for being here. I'm very happy that you're addressing mental illness.
Yes, sir.
When I'm in Tallahassee in Washington, I'm, I'm crying out for, you know, funding for mental illness and the wraparound services that help with the homelessness and the drug addiction. Talk to us a little bit about the homelessness. You've mentioned it before. Are we better or less, you know?
The numbers have increased in a way that the state defines homelessness is if, if, if Dr. Epps and his family, you know, lost at home and I couldn't stay with my, my sister, well, I'm still homeless because it's her house and not my house.
Yeah.
See, I, I grew up saying homeless, meaning you out there on the street, they are sleeping in a car. Well, we have a combination of both and when we found out, we, we tried to solve this. So we work with the community agencies. So there are agencies that are helping the students. They are, they are living with relatives. There's no one that I'm aware of that's sleeping on the street. And we do have packages, we do have funding for any kid who walks in. We have washing dryers on our campus. We have a food pantry, we have a clothes pantry. We, we also have money in our school advisory fund that says if a child said I need, but also have an anonymous donor who just donates five thousand dollars every year. I know who he is because I asked for the money, five thousand. That if I need to go and get some from Walmart right away without having to get the sack members, I have that into my, my availability and under the principal discretion. So we help these students with shoes and clothes and detergent. And a lot of them are in their homes, but sometimes the power is not on. That's beyond my control. There's no water running. And so some would come to the school early just to, you know, try to clean up and change clothes. But like I said, we, we do have a washing dryer. I have an ironing board and an iron. I just want these students to, I don't want any excuse why you're staying home and I understand hardship. And a lot of times the student won't necessarily tell me because of pride. But then we have teachers and individuals on campus where they can go to. Because I always say, every school needs at least one caring adult where the kid can go to. And every child should be able to find at least one caring adult on every campus. So it may not be me, but it better be somebody on my campus. I don't want to hear that I had no one to go to. That's not how we operate. And so with mental illness and homelessness, even those, I forgot what they call that words, a newer, it doesn't say poor is financially embarrassed or, and anyway, they try to give it a nice term.
Challenge, financial.
Challenge, you're broke. You don't have, you don't have any funds. And so we try to help them out as best we can because we understand what they're going through.
And you answered my next question. So you have a food pantry? Because you know, I've been doing feeding programs and I work with North Grade to help them fill their pantry. So right now it sounds like your pantry is good.
Well, pantry is good, but we've been very careful on the food that's being delivered. They, we had some food delivered Tuesday, what's today, Wednesday, Monday? But it had cans, boxes, nothing open. Because in the past, they would bring stuff, you know, like bread and stuff.
I know.
I'm kind of careful.
Non-perishables.
Non-perishable.
Help with any of that, let me know.
And I do, I'm letting you know now.
Okay. And then the last question I had was last year, I got a lot of calls and emails about, you know, some repairs that needed to be done. And I reached out to our school board member, Erica Whitfield. And she assured me some of that was being done. When I circled back around, some of your roof problems and things were being fixed. But I know that you had some pool damage and other things. Are you finding that they're stepping up and getting that work done?
Yes, they have. Matter of fact, over the summer, they started early in the year with one point four million dollars they allocated to take care of the roof. And they just wrapped that up this week. They had to do some walkthroughs and with the rain and the constant.
Well, because I was hearing a few excuses about, oh, well, it's historic and it's going to, I'm like, no, 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 no.
No, I didn't.
The health and safety of our children is number one and we need this work done. So I'm glad.
They got it done.
Good.
And matter of fact, this past weekend, the custodial services for the school district, first of all, the campus, they're going to do the whole campus. But Saturday and Sunday, they just did a wonderful job. And I just came to work Monday morning and just said, wow, thank you guys. But they told me about a month ago, they were coming, and these are the leaders of the, and they just said, they want, they're working on the curve appeal for Lake Worth High School.
Good.
This weekend, they are coming to trim the property. They haven't been trimmed for eight years.
Well, just know that we've been pushing for, you know, better service.
And they have a new general manager and he's just been doing a great job. So the money's been well spent and they're coming through on the promises.
Great, thank you.
Christian Robinson?
Yeah, I just, it's always exciting to hear from you and it's our high school and, and we're, well, your, your leadership is inspiring.
Thank you, sir.
And I, I love to hear you talk about expectation and excuses. And, and the word demanding is, is not a bad word.
No, it's not.
And, and you're, you're, you're caring, you're caring from the top of filters down. And that, that shows, I think. I'm really, the challenges that we have set us apart, how we respond to it really sets us apart.
Absolutely.
And, and you, you make us proud. I, I'm really looking forward to a celebration of homecoming in downtown Lake Worth.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yes.
And, and I want that centennial to be big. It can't just be a day or, I want it to be big.
Let's do it.
And, and. Bring it all the way down to Bryant Park, like we said in the beginning.
We just.
From the high school to Bryant Park and it's got to be at night so that the families, because the time when we did it, it had to be in the daytime. And we couldn't get all the people because they were at work to come out. We want the community to celebrate the kids.
It's going to be big. And then Dr. Annette Gilbert, and she is the guidance council graduate, you know her? She graduated in the seventies from Lake Worth High School and, and she is a wonderful lady. Just celebrated her forty-fourth wedding anniversary. And she's just been going, glowing, gleaming from ear to ear. And she's just been going glowing, gleaming from ear to ear. But she is, she is the chairperson of this with the alumni association to, to make sure we get the word out. And so we already been in conversation. She wants to do like a gala as well. The Hilton, the airport Hilton was already in conversation. They want to do a, in any way, the band and music, then get some of the, the veterans who were, who were doing some great things. And people who graduate, I mean, alumni, military veterans, those who have graduated from Lake Worth and who worked there to come back. So we in touch with everyone and just God, you know, we just hope and pray this pandemic is over and we can really go all, go all. We excited. And so we started planning it two years ago, taking pictures and videos of some of the members and some of our senior members who in their nineties, just trying to get some good pictures. And, and so matter of fact, I don't know if you all have seen this book, The History of Lake Worth High School. You guys, yeah, they, they have several of them. I brought one just to donate and give to, so you, so you all. You all can look at, can be, be yours. But, but the alumni association put that together just for alumni members. And it goes all the way back and just some famous, some wonderful faces from the school. So I appreciate you.
Maybe they're for sale too, huh?
They were selling them, but we have some, they just said, I gave you my copy because I love you.
In our library here.
Thank you.
I just have a few questions. How many of your students have come down with the coronavirus?
We have.
Percentage?
Yeah, there was a percentage of students, we, matter of fact, we've been very low for Lake Worth, surprisingly. Majority of those students are virtual students. They at home, they have not come on the campus. And so like I had one yesterday at two o'clock and it just happened to be a virtual student and I told the pair. But what they, they called me about and said, well, they, do they come for artillery to practice or in the band? Cause they have practice after. So that's why they contact me. And then I have to send a report back to the Department of Health and say, don't come on campus. It's a no. So, but actually the one that on campus, probably about four or five on campus. Like I said, the numbers are small. Remember we, I'm 2,400 students. And so right now 600 are coming on campus. So. Yeah, on the district, the district website is a dashboard. For staff members as well as students of all the schools in the, in the district.
And what percentage of your students actually received one or more Fs in their subjects?
The numbers changed because I had to do some grades, some kids, and what we did, a question of how many actually got the Fs. Some of the students, when they got the Fs, asked for redemption, a reprieve, or to give me a second chance. So some of the teachers kept that window open. Here's the assignment you missed. So you can get this F off and go back and we doing it. So the teachers were not giving me up. So all of a sudden they saw an help and said, oh no. And so can I make up the work? Oh, my teacher said, yes, you can make up the work. This is what I've been trying to get you to do. So had to be, it was over 300, 400, between three and 400. But like I said, it's going down because I had a solid number, but I've been, I've been hitting those grade change requests where a teacher can put an NG and the NG says no grade because a kid has said, you know what? I'm so sorry. I'm going to wake up, turn my computer off. Can you give me two weeks to give assignment? Or give me a week? So, but we turned around, but those students who were failing the most, we started contacting them back in November. October, really, because of the first nine weeks gave us an indication that this is not, it's not going to be pretty. And then now we at the end of the second quarter, first semester. And the reality is that they failed us first semester. Now we have rolled them back into a course recovery. And so we had about 20, some seniors who failed first semester, who need, they need this to graduate. They're on campus and we rolled them into an edge annuity, which is like a credit recovery, course recovery. They can, they can make up what they messed up on. And they can finish that a good six, eight week, they can finish that in six weeks. So and then put them back on track. And then once they finish it, then we can put them in another course if they need it. So.
Well, we're so proud of everything you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
We're in awe. We, we know how tough it is for you right now.
It was a tough one.
So through our future actions and what we discussed today, a little bit that I'm going to share with the commission in just a moment. I think that we could make some really good strides.
Thank you very much.
Be there for you more.
And the last thing, part of our reading, you know, one of the solutions that we are doing is inviting professionals from the community to just Google me, just to come in virtually to read to our students. We had a literacy week, two weeks ago, and I read to the students at Highland Elementary School. So we have some college professors from Land University and FAU and some of the community leaders going to read to our high school students. And also just some words of knowledge on entrepreneurship. And let me talk to you, you know, just have some guest speakers in virtually so they don't have to leave their office, but we can bring them to the classroom.
Anytime you want. And I also love to read too.
Yeah. Okay. And thank you for volunteering to be part of our SAC this year. Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks. Be safe and give our love to the kids.
Yes, ma'am.
And to the teachers, staff.
Says negative, be positive.
There you go. I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, folks, let's move on to our commission liaison reports and comments, starting with Commissioner Robinson. You want to get us going?
Really, time, time flies when you're having fun. I thought it was just yesterday, we had a birthday for Lee Antio. She was 100, now she's 102. So I wish her good health and a long life. The Leisure Services Department had a, had a Saturday night luau. It was a lot of work for the staff and the parks, grounds people. But there were a lot of kids out there exercising and having a good time. So really appreciate their efforts to maintain some normality in the times that we have. Still a lot of space for artwork on the wall. It's a beautiful thing. What's there is beautiful. Got to thank the neighborhoods for their participation in trying to give the candidates, all the candidates, an opportunity to meet the people. PBSO had their, I'm going to call it meeting at the Osborne went well. And charter review applicants has been rather slow. I think we should wait for the applicants' choices to be made after the election. Since, you know, it's important enough that we've waited this long. I think we can wait another two weeks after March 2nd to choose from all the applicants that I'm looking forward to. That's it. It's still dangerous with COVID and still have to do all the things required.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Um, yeah. Mr. Robinson mentioned the forum for policing in Palm Beach County. It was great to see Barbara Cheves and her staff and Captain Bear and his staff. It was a great meeting. Most of us were there. National League of Cities, we had our Zoom meeting for the gay and lesbian advocacy group today. We've had our sober home task force, the state attorney sober home task force that I continue to sit on. We had our Zoom meeting. Tomorrow is our Palm Beach County League of Cities meeting. Big thank you to Leisure Services for all the hard work that they've been doing and thinking outside the box. And, you know, trying to come up with some fun events for the community, even though it, it may be virtual. Big thank you to Emrick and his staff and the parking staff. They've been coming out and helping, volunteering their time with our food distribution every Tuesday, and that will continue. We've got more funding from local government and Feeding South Florida has gotten new funding. So, you know, we will continue that as long as there is a need. Thank you.
Commissioner Robinson.
I'm sorry. I, I attended the forum of policing in, in Palm Beach County on February 10th and most of us, you know, attended. And one of the concerns I had was whether or not we could have more police presence as a result of the almost million dollar grant that they received from, to work in, in that district. And I, I'd really like to see a police substation. It was one of the questions that I had. And Captain Bear said that he would certainly look into it. So I, I want us to make sure that we're mindful, that we're pushing more of a police presence. And, and someone says, you know, when the police come, you know, it's not always a good thing. Well, I want it to be a good thing. And I, I want the citizens to know that the police are coming to help the young people in the community. They're going to have a, a paddle or a dare program or something that the kids could benefit from. And I think having a police substation in that area would certainly go a long way in increasing the relationship between the police and, and the community. So I'm hoping that we can certainly move forward with that.
Vice Mayor Proton.
Thank you, Madam. I don't have a great deal. I do have a question for the city manager regarding the vaccine rollout. Okay. I'm becoming increasingly concerned because each day I travel through different counties and I'm seeing other counties seem to have a lot of activity going on, mass vaccination type programs. And spear over at the towers and others who have similar populations. And there's a lot of frustration out there as to why, for some reason, we, Lake Worth Beach doesn't seem to be getting a lot of love right now when it comes to this vaccine. And I'm becoming a little bit concerned with maybe the county level. Can you help us out? Do we need to have a special meeting or something that to really talk about this and bring somebody in? Because, you know, we're being asked questions every day and we're doing our very best to provide the best information we can and help in whatever way we can. But it's getting to the point now where folks really don't want to hear that we can't help them. Okay. And that's what we need to be doing right now. We should have been doing this all along. And it just seems that the county seems to be in a stagnant place. Is it, is it just me? Or is there just not a whole lot going on in this part of the county?
Madam Mayor.
The exception, yeah.
I apologize if that, if I could just, in a nutshell, I think part of the issue that we're having is the county is not moving towards doing some points of vaccination. For example, in a place like Lake Worth Towers, they're focused right now as they were back when the testing rollout occurred in the larger sites. And then you've got the governor doing the rollout in a whole nother level with Publix. And, and it seems kind of perky jerky. So they're, they're, they're ramping up their vaccination locations in as many places as possible. You've got a population out there that wants them to come maybe inside of building like Lake Worth Towers. And we're working with fire rescue to try to facilitate that because there's different requests, if you kind of break it down. And that's, there's subtlety in that.
Understand. And, and I understand that Palm Beach County has a, a large portion, a large percentage of seniors, which is a vulnerable group. But Lake Worth Beach, in addition to our senior population, has a high population of at-risk populations. Okay. So it's kind of like the double whammy. I, I don't know what we have to do. You know, I hate to say this publicly, but I've made some phone calls to our county commissioners and not getting a lot of, you know, feedback. I don't know what to do. And I'm becoming increasingly concerned about our effectiveness, you know, in, in, in working with the county to get this to happen for our, our population here in the city.
Well, as a mayor's point of privilege, I can say that I've spoken with several in the county and we've been assured that because of our past actions in regards to the testing.
Can you speak up, please?
I'm sorry. I said, I've spoken with people in the county and in regards to our, our good results with our localized neighborhood testing programs, that we have the infrastructure in place, especially through Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and the nonprofit groups like Caridad and the other nursing groups that have worked with us. You know, it's been said and not officially that, you know, Bell Glade was probably going to be one of the first sites that would get that localized testing, but that we were in the running to be number two in that because we already have the areas, we have the locations. We have the ability to do it and have shown the county that we were responsible stewards of that. So I'm, I'm, I'm holding on to that positive news as when it becomes available, you know? The biggest misconception is people seem to think that we've got a pod and we can just open it up and start putting vaccines out. You know, in, in the community, we get it through the county.
There's not enough vaccine.
I'm sorry, there's not a, it's not that we can't do it. We can't do it on our own. We, I mean, it comes from the state to the county to us.
We cannot as, as a community, you know, the, the Department of Health or whoever's distributing the vaccines is not going to come to the city of Lake Worth Beach specifically and say, here, here, here's X amount of doses, you know, you, you administer. That's not, that I don't, that's not my expectation. My expectation is that we have the communication and the partnership that these folks are coming to us and say, okay, here's a time certain, this is what the plan is.
Well, we had Dr. Alonso here and I don't want to go, this is, we're getting into an agenda item here, but I, I think we should bring it back as an agenda item. But just remembering that we just had Dr. Alonso here.
Understood.
Who gave some of that information.
I just, I just, my sense is that this city for some reason isn't getting enough focus.
Okay, let's, let's bring it back.
A proportion amount of focus here in our community.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, did I get everybody? Okay. You got me all off because I was going to start with one thing. Happy news. On behalf of the Arbor Day Foundation, I write to congratulate Lake Worth Beach on earning recognition as the 2020 Tree City USA. Residents of Lake Worth Beach should be proud to live in a community that makes the planting and care of trees a priority. Lake Worth Beach is one of more than 3,600 Tree City USA communities with a combined population of 155 million. This program is sponsored by the Arbor Day Foundation in partnership with the U.S. Forest Service and the National Association of State Foresters. So congratulations, Tree City. All right. I want to thank everyone that came out to family date night at Bryant Park on Saturday. It was great fun. It's just so nice to see. And between the holiday extravaganza we did with the movie Polar Express and the Halloween event that we did there with the costume contest and this family date night, it was so cute. All the families with their own little tables and their own little luau stuff and hula hoops and all kinds of stuff around. And I got a chance to meet every family that was in there and we had so much fun. And they actually made me dance one of those silly cupid shuffle something or others.
Like this.
They made me go through the whole thing before I had to talk. I had no breath left by the time I finished it. Before I made it all the way to the ground and I had to get back up again. I was like, whoa. But it was so much fun. And I want to thank Leisure Services for really, like everyone had said, thinking outside the box and bringing these types of events at a very unusual time. But thank you to the families who, who really, so many of them said, you know, Mayor, thank you so much for just doing this. You know what it's like to be able to have our kids just run around this park loose and get that energy out and do it and, and be able to see friends and, and, and just have a really good wholesome time with their families. And I really appreciate that. So thank you to everyone involved in that. Don't forget the Street Painting Festival goes virtual, virtual for 2021. You can watch a select past participating artists locally and from around the USA create their works of art. They're going to be sharing photos and videos online of works in progress, bringing the art of street painting to life. The photos and videos will be shared between three and five on Saturday, February 20th. And between three and five on Sunday, February 21st via social media. So please, if you need that information, just give me a call. I know it's facebook.com/streetpaintingfestival, instagram.com/streetpainting and hashtag Lake Worth Street Painting Festival. Okay. Also, we've got a commendation from the United States Census. A thank you from them, recognizing the city of Lake Worth Beach as an invaluable member of the 2020 Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. They appreciate all the efforts we made in making the partnership program a success and helping achieve a successful 2020 census. Thank you to Jess and everybody who worked tirelessly.
Thank you, Jess.
Yes, and all of our staff too, works tirelessly to help us. Ben too, working around the clock and so many others. It was difficult. Sure. You know, we've been thrown everything this year, what hurricane census, COVID. racially, I mean, boy, it's been a tough, tough, crazy year. But you know what, folks? We're doing it together and we're doing good.
And happy Black History Month.
And happy Black History Month. Why don't we have a proclamation for that? Next week, maybe? Next week. Okay. All right, let's move on to the public participation of non-agenda items and consent agenda. Madam City Clerk, do you have any?
Madam Mayor, I have one from with Colemeyer. He wants to speak. Mr. Colemeyer, if Keith, if you can get Mr. Colemeyer ready. And then you have three minutes to talk.
Yeah, he should be able to talk now.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you. And good evening to the commission and Madam Mayor. And first of all, it was inspiring to hear Dr. Epps because that was a really good example of public service. Especially when public schools are being defunded and public funds are being used instead increasingly for for-profit charter schools, which to, you know, makes his job a lot more difficult. And kudos to the tree board chairman, Richard Stowe, for this award from the Arbor Day Foundation, Tree City USA. Cause that's, he's been working really hard on that. Now I want to go back to the last public meeting two weeks ago of the commission, when you discussed funding a feasibility study for the relocation of 17 South M Street. I want to thank Commissioner Robinson for suggesting that the CRA be directed to incorporate that building into a new development. And also to invite public participation in the planning process. This, I wish it had been done a long time ago when properties were being assembled by the city with taxpayer money. But instead the parcels were conveyed to the CRA. But instead, the parcels were conveyed to the CRA who put the project out to bid without any stipulation regarding the city's historic preservation guidelines. In this way, our town planning has been outsourced to developers. And the developers aren't, it's not a bad word, but our objection to this scheme is not frivolous, though, and it's pragmatic. The assembled parcels cost the taxpayers a lot of money, four and a half million dollars. While the developer that the CRA has chosen offers to pay just 2.8 million and will likely receive incentives in the form of tax abatement. So that's a public subsidy of more than 1.8 million dollars. Buying high and selling low is bad business and bad public policy. Neither are neither are our objections based on the nineteen, the 2019 rendering by William Waters as cynically asserted by the mayor. She is, she is in no doubt aware that our objections were based on the Element, which is a four-to-five-story complex proposed by the CRA under negotiation currently. This mischaracterization is something that is really an insult to the to the citizens because, you know, we know that it's it's the the element that is so egregious. And then she threw in last week, the mayor did, that this parking had to be used for the the parcels have been used for parking because tax money was raised for that purpose. Finally, the conclusion of this topic last week is that we tabled the motion for a study. Let me just have quickly finish. It'd be more accurate to say that there is no master plan. The commission has advocated.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you so much, Keith. Okay, here we go. Moving on to our approval of the minutes.
So moved.
All those in favor?
I, I, Mayor. I would like to correct the minutes or at least add to the minutes my response to your saying that I talked to developers. My response was that I didn't, and it's not in the minutes. And I would also like to make make it a recorded that we we do have a developer, the CRA has chosen a developer, and they have made a proposal that was chosen by the CRA. Both of those things need to be incorporated into the minutes, just so that there's no misinformation. There is a project. There is a developer that was chosen by the CRA. And when you said that I had spoken to developers about the Northwest Ballfields, I responded by saying I didn't, and that's not in the minutes. So I would like the minutes to reflect both of those items.
Madam City Attorney?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Does that have to be done by a vote?
Yes, Your Honor, if he's asking to revise the minutes as drafted, there would have to be a motion to revise the minutes as requested.
I make the motion to revise the minutes to reflect that I did not speak to any developers about the Northwest Ballfields and that there is a chosen developer by the CRA for the Element project, the LNM area.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, now, my question is to you, you've got a developer for the project, which is, nobody's saying that there isn't a developer for the project, but has a project, may I speak, please, sir? May I speak, please, sir?
Sure.
Thank you. There hasn't been a project presented to. Has there been a project presented? Staff? Has there been a project presented to planning and zoning or historic resources preservation? Has a project gone through the vetting process? Have public have public meetings been called? Have public? I mean, has anything gone through the public process yet? City Manager, can you?
Madam Mayor, as of today, it's my, I see Mr. Waters there, that nothing's been submitted to the city in the form of any kind of proposal for.
Mr. Waters, would you concur?
Right, we have not received anything. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
And that's not what I'm disputing. I'm I'm saying that it was said that there was no project, no proposed project or developer, and that's needs to be corrected. In fact, there is.
There's a developer. Someone was chosen, but no project has yet gone through.
But the minutes state that there was no developer or project chosen.
Okay, you want to add developer? Please do.
Misinformation that that should be corrected in the minutes. I don't.
So add add developer, that's fine. There's no project that's gone through or been vetted by the city.
I understand.
So if you want to change it to developer.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the minutes reflecting correct information.
So put it in there that Commissioner Robinson said that he didn't talk to developers about the ball field and that a developer has been chosen to represent the LNM property.
Who's the judge? Who's the developer?
Who's the developer? I don't know. But the CRA, it's through the CRA. It hasn't even come before us.
Why don't we do this? May I?
Please.
Why don't we ask Commissioner Robinson to put his corrections in writing and document everything he wants on the record before we go ahead and do this?
Well, I think that he just pretty much summed up what he wants to do is he wants to make.
I'd like to see it in in black and white. Let's see it in writing. We don't have to do it. I'm just asking.
I'm just saying, either way, it's going to, oh, it's gonna, you know. It's it's, no, it's fine. He wants to say that he said it. I don't remember him saying that, but that's fine. I trust in him, and if he wants to add the developer, yes. But again, as long as it's not that there is a project, because nothing's come, I don't even know who the developers. Let's see. You want to make those changes? I'm fine with it. You got a motion and a second. Ms. Bloxton, would you like to have anything?
I think that if Herman makes a motion to correct the minutes, we should honor that and vote on it. If he, if you feel that what he said is incorrect, then have it during the discussion. But once it goes to a motion, if this is how he feels and this is what he wants to add it to the minutes as his interpretation of what happened, that's his interpretation, and it should be put into the minutes. And if you have a different interpretation, make a motion about yours. But let his stand because that's his interpretation of what happened and what he thought he did not say or he did say. And it, in the long run, it's gonna be just recorded as to what someone said, so let it go.
That's pretty much what I just said, isn't it?
That's not all you want it.
That's that's pretty much what I just said. It's fine with me as long as he wasn't suggesting that there was a project that has already been vetted. As long as he's not saying that, I'm fine with it. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks. Public hearing, we're gonna read ordinance number 2020-20. City Attorney, you get the honor of reading that ordinance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Ordinance 2020-20, an ordinance of the city of Lakewood Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 18 Utilities, Article 7 Stormwater Utilities, Section 18-103 On-Site Drainage by requiring maintenance easements for zero lot line lots. Amending Chapter 23 Land Development Regulations by adding a new Section 23.2-37 Temporary Use Permit to Create a New Approval Process for Temporary Uses. Amending Article 3 Zoning Districts Division 1 Generally, Section 23.3-6 Use Tables to Establish Temporary Uses permitted by Zoning District. Amending Article 4 Development Standards, Section 23.4-1 Secondary Accessory Dwelling Units, Section 23.4-6 Home Occupations, Section 23.4-10 Off-Street Parking to Clarify Development Standards Related to Accessory Dwelling Units in Parking as Well as Provide Additional Flexibility for Home Occupation Uses in Mixed-Use Districts and Adding a New Section 23.4-22 Temporary Uses to Establish Development Review Standards for Temporary Uses by Amending Article 5 Supplementary Regulations, Section 23.5-7 Concurrently Management in Public Facility Capacity to Require Maintenance Easements on Zero Lot Line Zero Lot Line Lots and Providing Perseverability, Conflicts, Codification, and an Effective Date.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. We've got a motion by the Vice Mayor Pro Tem and a second by the Vice Mayor. Just remember, this is a second reading, and for anyone who's listening to this, or hears the word ADU because of concerns, remember, this is for existing accessory dwelling units. It's also for accessory dwelling units within the mixed-use area. If that's not, is that a correct, Madam City Attorney? Excuse me, William.
He's your expert on this.
He's my expert.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the regulations only affect where we allow ADUs now. It is not expanding the areas at all.
Okay, I know we discussed it last time. I didn't want the whole presentation again, but I wanted to reiterate that for people watching at home. Thank you very much. We've got a motion on the floor and a second. Are there any public comment cards, Madam City Clerk?
No, Madam Mayor.
Seeing there are none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, William. Thank you to staff under the Lakewood Beach Electric Utility at Liberty. Are you here? I see you.
Yes, I am, Madam.
We've got a couple of items under the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by the Vice Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Are there any public comment cards?
No, Madam Mayor.
Seeing there are none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you much. City Attorney, did you have a report?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you so much, City Manager. And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.